It's Monday, November third, and we are at the town hall meeting. I see quite a bit on the agenda today. Today's town meeting will be the last one that we post on this channel. In the future, you'll be able to find all town meetings on our newest channel, NOKA Media. Welcome, everyone. Nice to see another great year note. Regular meeting of council, Monday, November third, twenty twenty five, at six thirty P M in the civic center council chambers. Please kindly place your cell phones on mute or turn them off. Call meeting in order, the township of Chaplo does hereby call the regular meeting of Monday, November third, twenty twenty five, to order at six thirty P M. Indigenous land acknowledgement, the municipality of Chapo is situated in Sichuan City, entitled lands and nation have increased people treaty nine area, and recognizes neighboring First Nations of Brenzek House, Chapo Creed, Chapo Jibway, Mishpaw Cotton, and Missinabwe Creed, with knowledge along history of the First Nation and A T people in Ontario, and show respect to them today. Approval of the agenda, whereas the members of council have been presented with an agenda for the regular council meeting of Monday, November third, twenty twenty five, will be resolved that the agenda be adopted as presented, can please get a mover?
Oh.
Moved by Paul, second by?
Paul second.
Kathy? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Carried. Disclosure of pecuniary interests, may I bring up the request pecuniary interest be declared for the record? Lisi? Kathy? Alex?
No.
Paul?
None.
Alright, delegations, none. Committee of adjustment, none. Consent the agenda, whereas council township of Chapo reviewed consent to the agenda, it consists of council committee minutes, and regular council meeting minutes for Monday, October twentieth, twenty twenty five, and Chapo Regional Economic Development Board meeting minutes for September twenty second, twenty twenty five. Now therefore be resolved that the township of Chapo does hereby approve the regular meeting minutes for Monday, October twentieth, and that council hereby receives the Regional Economic Development Corporation meeting minutes of September twenty second, twenty twenty five. Can please have a mover?
I'm just.
Moved by Lisi, second by?
I'll second.
Paul, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
I've got a opening. Couple meetings behind them, catch up on the C R E D C minutes. There was a letter in the minutes.
Sorry, yeah, we're not, it's once a month meeting, so the October meeting gets passed in November, and we're not at the November meeting yet. So it should be this September. Sorry.
It's my freedom. The point, there is a, there is a mention of a letter in there that the resignation, termination of the contract. So I'm tasty for myself on council, I can see that letter. I think it would help council be informed on next steps. Perhaps that could be included in the minutes or whatever.
Okay, anything else? Hearing none, all in favor? Carried. Okay. Business. Seven point one, Matulun District Administrative Board Budget Summary, and that the council township does hereby receive the Matulun District Administration Board's twenty twenty six budget summary for information, can please get a mover?
I'll move.
Moved by Paul, second by?
Alex.
Alex? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Carried. Seven point two, Matulun District Administrative Board Strategic Plan, twenty twenty six, twenty thirty, that the council township does hereby receive the Matulun District Administration Board Strategic Plan, twenty twenty six, twenty thirty, for information, can please have a mover? Moved by Lisi, second by?
I'll second.
Kathy? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? New administrative position administrator, that the council township of Chapo hereby approved the addition of a new administrative position, municipality handle economic development stewardship, assist council mayor in assigned tasks, and assisting CEO of senior administrative capacity, and that council approved including this new position in the twenty twenty six budget, and furthermore, that the title of new position is? Question mark. Can I get a mover?
I'll move for discussion.
Okay, second.
I'll second.
Please. Okay, open for discussion. Go ahead, Paul.
So to, uh, council, I have this question around C R E C and our contract being terminated. We are without an economic development office position right now, so, but I didn't see here as timing. It talks about twenty six budget, but we are without an economic development person at the moment, which means opportunities could be passed as well. So just wondering what the time of recruitment would be?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It was my intention, if this position is passed this evening, that we will start our recruitment right away. I've actually got the job posting all ready to go, so it would be tomorrow.
More questions, more discussion? So to answer your question previous, this would be instead of having a consultant, would bring it in-house and then I would, together with this person, work at the economic development opportunities that are coming. As we know, we have one already that will be coming forward to the community, which we've been working on, bringing prospecting, and we've had numerous meetings with them to engage them in making several million dollar investment in the community. We've also helped with funding of the solving of letters and stuff like that for the province today. Numerous examples that we're already doing, it's just the paperwork that becomes a nightmare. We just, we need somebody that's following up with these letters and getting them out and getting them, that's not one of my strong suits. So we need somebody there that, and it's also that's attending the meeting and taking the notes at the meeting and doing those things, and also going to certain meetings and getting the proper information that we want out.
So two points on that, as you said, can I end with a question mark on what the job title would be for discussion? But then, with the mayor's job, so mayor, it's a different beast than council, there's a lot of support needed there. And I think it's important that that's communicated to the community to push the agenda. There is that administrative support. There's a lot to unpack with the, with the position describing the four lines there. So we, what we as a council have done is get the Chapo Regional Economic Development Corporation going. It's about the E E O position in-house, so that's where we've been driving the bus to get that at arm's length from council on the economic side. So there's that piece there that we need to be able to support administratively. But then the other piece is this position seems to be bringing back in house something that we've got in another restructure already.
So.
So that's something that's.
Two answers, two answers to what you're asking in there. So one was to have a corporation aside from the township where you can do things in it. So we talked about as a council, let's say we had an interest at the airport, and we'll use the M and R as an example. And they said, hey, you know, if you had hangar space there, we would rent that per month, or we would sign a lease with you, or another corporation, it doesn't have to be there. It's just an example of a space, and then we would say, okay, this corporation would then levy against the hydro building that we put into it, which is being rented to now to Hydro One, and that money goes within the Economic Development Corporation. So then we could look at building, building another one and leasing it out, so it would have its own way of funding. And there's a lot of opportunities where council can apply for certain funding, but a non-for-profit organization can. And, but it's held, one hundred percent of the shares are owned by the municipality. So it's one arm's length, and there were several examples that we talked about. CAP has one very, very successful, that's done very well. Hurst has one. There was a list about ten of them, I can't remember them all right now. So it's just mirroring those, but also having the ability to pivot and do different things. Drag races we put through there, so there's another example where, you know, the municipality wouldn't want that liability of municipality for having had, you put it through a corporation, so it's one arm for you, so God forbid, but something happens, you know, we're protecting, you're protecting the municipality as a council.
And that's where I'm trying to get to, where I take a lot of pride in being able to explain to the public exactly what we're doing, the name of the position. So we'll take someone in the front row, Pierrette asked me, what's this in the position gonna be? How does it differ from how it was before? What's the title? Because it shouldn't be question mark coming to council, we should have like a job title in there. I think there is a few things on the economic side that.
Yeah, well, we can table it and come back with one, it's also an opportunity for council to name as they see.
But I do wanna say, having, being really involved in getting the C R E D C going and being a productive thing, I see the value of having our economic person in, in there and making that work. And I don't know if we've reached the end of one in that, in that capacity where we want to restart completely back in, because then we might not have that over, that independence that you're, to your point, somebody, you know, you come back under C E O directly. You know, we wanna have that, that little building. So it's a very, very brief description here, I think there is some more that we can unpack. I really support getting the administration, so that your job is not a day-to-day hey, hey, on the small stuff and the, and the big stuff, but the economics side, I do think I would be in favor of table on that for a little bit more discussion coming back to council.
Okay.
My colleagues. Have a.
What do you wanna do?
I have one question, so if this mission is handling economic development, is there training or certification needed? Or are we looking at providing that training to the person?
My, my view would be see who applies, see if they have the talent to be able to talk to people. It's more of a position of talking to them, getting the information that people needs, and then working with me to get it across the line. And we have a similar one that we're gonna announce here in the next two weeks, that's really, really good for the community, and something that we all took apart and bring it in. And I think it's getting that person that's gonna fill out all that paperwork and chase all the different leads and make sure that we're getting it all. And there's a huge, enormous amount of paperwork. And of course, one is going back and forth, like you gotta, we gotta have something. So, and we've done a different approach where we have, you know, we're fortunate enough, I like the economic development part. And it's one of our mandates when you have a some areas to bring, you know, economic to your community. I like doing it, we've been a little bit successful at it, and I, we just, we need some help in the background to make it happen.
Just coming back to the title piece, so Judy, when you were doing the research on the job description and what the roles would be, I'm assuming what that other community is?
I, through you, Mr. Mayor, I did indeed.
And then what did they title it?
So not a lot of municipalities went with the executive assistant role, which is kind of what we were talking about in the early days. It's, uh, I mean, I really like going simple and calling the position an administrator. It's not an administrative assistant, it's a step up from that, so a more senior role. But I think with that title, we can encompass the economic development stewardship that we have to do, but there's also an awful lot of communications that come into the mayor and council that need to be handled and dealt with in a timely fashion. And I really think having a senior level person, um, being able to cover all of that, plus go to the economic development meetings, which are done every, I think, once a month. We need that person, and they'll also sit in on the C R E D C meetings. So they'll be fully in the know of what direction the board wants to go in and get that information firsthand. I think that would be a helpful tool. So I was just sort of, we were bouncing around, council liaison, Reg suggested council liaison, liaison in economic development. But I was leaning towards just being simple and calling it an administrator position.
And just for the benefit for good leader today, so Ryan is the chair of the Economic Development Corporation, I'm the vice chair. We've been without an economic development lead for a few months now, and it caused significant impact to us. Every grant is not being applied for, it, it's a critical position. I, I, I understand what you're saying absolutely, but I think the more we delay, the more it is.
I think we, we know what we wanna go after, and we know what we wanna do as a council, we know the city, how we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that. It's just the heavy paperwork now. We need somebody that's in there, you know, spends time with me, okay, we're gonna do this, this, this is why, you gotta call this person, I need you to do this, this, I need you to talk to him about this. I need you, you know, and it's, it's putting the package together, and we're missing that, that body.
Okay, so then work out with the contract that we have, can we not try one more time? Get someone who knows how to do the applications. You saw, when I, one time I got upset, we just missed out on that grant application, right? And he said, let's give them a try, now they're done. But that expertise is out there, that's what we're looking for, people who can get these grants, who apply, and they can be part of the structure that we've set up with the C R E D C. We can try to make that work for.
So.
That's easier for me to explain to people, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay, but that's a different type, that's a different type of talent than what we're looking for, or what I, what I.
Two parts, yeah.
What I need. You're, you're, you're talking about somebody who can fill out grant applications, knows all the rules, we can find those when we need it. We need the person that interacts with the actual people, that gets people to invest in our community, and follows the lead of, hey, you know, I need you to go to this meeting, stress these points, you know, make sure, okay, they're looking for this permit, need that. Chase that within the municipality, get that permit, because they're gonna need it for this date. Okay, minister hasn't gotten back to me, chase that office, get that, phone in, say this, phone in, do this. The days of sending an email and hoping that you get a response in time for what you need are few and far between. You gotta call people. You know, pick up the phone, call them, that's how you get results. You know? And it gets your attention, because you're, hello, yeah, hey, I need this, I haven't heard back from you, I, I need this, you know? Engaging with people more, we've gone to where you send a text, you send an email, and, oh, I did my job. Try getting me off the phone, I'm calling you for something. Much different, you know, because I'm gonna call back the next day if I don't get it, you're gonna call back the next day. Hey, our, our community needs this, you know, chasing it, look at the grant, how many times we called the minister? Now he sends us a letter saying, it's coming, the answer's coming, the answer's coming, you know, because we're engaged with them. And we gotta stay more and more engaged, I find engaging is a key to success.
Speaking from leading your organization, I can really see having the body, having the right hand there, can, isn't it for, to pick up the phone? Can't do that because.
How many things can you get off your desk?
How many times I've tried to do phone calls, and I'd love to have somebody else do them, but that's sort of.
So you're seeing where, where, where I wanna head with, with it. And, and we, we just, we need an administrator. You, you just need one for that committee, you need one to tie it all in with what I'm doing at the municipality level, and then we gotta get it over the line. And we've got that announcement that's coming there, you know, that's a big investment in our little community. But there's gonna be lots of things that we're gonna need. It's building, like, you know, all the different things, you gotta have something that's chasing those and not gonna let up on. And then we've got a spreadsheet of how many things, forty things that we're working on? You know, somebody's gotta grab that sheet and run with it. You can't have the C E O chasing it all the time. There's a lot of things that the C E O, C E O needs to focus on too. You know, we got a lot of things coming out of Wacom for the dig that we're doing. You know, there's a lot of permitting paperwork, you know, look at all the delays I've suffered. Like, you gotta, you gotta have a balance of everything.
This is a big position, so I, we, we've hired for a big position at the town minister, and, you know, I don't necessarily move that fast, but I think people know what we're kind of looking at from this meeting. I do think that there are some things we could need to have. This four lines, there is more to it than in the council, you know, than the agenda here for the public, there's much more in the council package, but still, I think there's a little bit more time, maybe you might probably just wanna move ahead straight away, but I, I think we do need to just take a moment, get this right, so that we do get someone who's going to be.
Once again, administrator, we're gonna get it right, and we're gonna start moving it, and you know that some of the things that we're working on right now, that we're not gonna need a press release yet, but they're coming. And they're coming quick, we've got people in book flights to come, we've got, next week, we've got a whole set of meetings with an investor that's going to do some things. We've got more that are coming on other projects, I mean, we're chasing them, but somebody's gonna follow up on stuff.
I'm a short-term paying, long-term paying guy, so I, I think half another two weeks, but I do. What the public understands is very important, and.
Well, I, I don't think the public, when elected, said they didn't think we were taking this seriously and making things happen. We've worked on a lot of things in the community to get things, you know, we've taken a lot of things very, very seriously, and I think, you know, they trust in their elected officials to get the job done. By doing this, we're gonna get the job done and chase it more. Anyways, any other thoughts? So we have a motion on the floor for, we've talked so long on this one, where were we at?
So Paul moved it, Lisi seconded it.
Okay.
He still need to come up with the name.
So, does administrator work for you? Okay, so now you had a thing where you wanted to table it for two weeks?
Yes, for the next meeting.
Okay, is anybody in favor of doing that? Okay. Is anybody in favor for moving this and moving along? Do we have enough appetite for that? Where do you wanna go guys for?
I'm for it, but, okay, move quick on this, but making sure the right person gets the job, don't jump in, because there's only one applicant or something.
Yep.
So we need the right person.
Exactly, so we gotta move. That's the point. And they have to be a good fit with me. Yeah, but you gotta have.
No, I get it, yes.
You gotta have the, someone that's engaging is there, you know, and someone who picks up on my weaknesses, right?
No, for sure.
Yeah, so we gotta, we gotta get it right, guaranteed. Okay. Are we all in favor? Carried. Okay. Alright, fire chief reporter. We're gonna get it live.
Welcome, Graham. How we doing at the fire department?
We're doing great. I guess you've all got a copy of my report. Uh, we've been moving along quite well, now we are back to being members of the mutual aid for Chapo Wawa. We do have a big area to cover, which we found over three before. We have received two free skates pumps, I, we, we might have seen them from a medical company out of Toronto. Don't know why they wanted to donate them, they asked if you would like one, I said, sure, we'll take two, and they sent us two. So we have two portable water pumps, which we will be putting in on the trucks later on in the year. So that's for September. October, we had our open house, I don't know if any of yous needed, but it was quite successful. Bryce Bertrand and David Hearn and myself attended all the schools, and we talked to all the kids about fire prevention and safety. And then from there, we had our mutual aid, or our open house, and we got over three hundred people that attended, and it was a very well-attended meeting, and I just lost my report here.
Great pictures, by the way. Great pictures, the kids looked pretty happy.
Yeah, no, it was well-attended. Then we got to purchase our jaws of life, we had training in October, and we had a gentleman come up from Hamilton, give us three days of training, which went over also very successful. Uh, we cut up twelve cars, uh, the new tools are much faster, much lighter, and better than the older ones we had. So we're set to go with, if there's anything, hopefully we never get to use them, other than practice.
And along that, I attended the training session for a short time during work, and it was pretty good to see the guys. They were pretty excited, cutting all that stuff up, they were racing cars, scenario with somebody underneath the car and bracing it and putting up chocks and all that. Brought back some memories of being on the department, and it was, it was good to see, and thank you for putting all that on, the guys were just fantastic, it was, it was good to see.
They were excited, and this brought morale up in lots of different parts of the, the fire department, our attendance is up quite a bit from a few months ago.
Oh, why don't you give us some numbers, because.
I don't have any numbers offhand, but.
We had, we had close to almost hundred percent attendance on one of the meetings from six in previous, so.
Some of the meetings were down to three, now we're up to fifteen, and most of them, so they're, it's really, we're, we're moving ahead with leaps and bounds. We have had discussions with the fire marshal, he is coming up for a media meeting this Wednesday. Gone over here with all the training that we need, we do have to get one in, of course, one to, to have the fire department in compliance. So we have looked at a person from Bruce Mines area, who is a fire marshal training instructor, and we have hired him to do the training course, he's gonna come to Chapo two days out of the month, so that will put us in compliance and get us back up and, and running. The other thing is the, I was gonna say jaws of life, but we have them now, we also are, have two Starlink receivers that will be on the fire trucks, because now that we go in the, in the area, we need communications because of the new electrical vehicles. Uh, we can't come into any of them to free a person from them, because it could be electric duty. So whenever we have a card, it's an electric card, we have to get ahold of the, this company, and with the revenues being in vehicles now or communications, before we leave here, and, oh, I wonder how the guys are making that. We wouldn't know anything happened until he got back, but now we'll have communications from at all times when we leave the fire hall, so it's.
Just a question on that, so that is said and done.
Yeah.
Do we have a time to get those in, in discussion, now we're gonna expand the service of this, that's critical, right? Please, Starlink, when do you anticipate those being put in?
Uh, we have them already.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they're not, we need them, yesterday, we got, we got the next three.
So literally.
Yeah, we, we, we just ordered them this week, and we have them already, on Wednesday night, we will be installing them and using them in the truck. So that's another, uh, the, also these kits that we've got, or the, the fire skates, we do need to have one of our trucks upgraded for being able to carry that weight, and then we've, we've worked in close with Russia, and that will be done shortly also. We also are getting an inverter installed into one of the trucks, because the new equipment is all badly operated. So instead of coming all the way back to Chapo, we have an inverter, and you can thank the mayor for that, because I was gonna buy his new generator to do that, and he come up with the idea, why didn't you just put an inverter in? So that's what we've done. We found one on sale, they're eighteen hundred dollars, all those things, more expensive than, but Colson says, comes through again, and giving it to us for less than half price. So. And we did get donations from Colson, the Barton Shop and Valmont for our open house, and I've sent letters to all of them, thanking them very much. If there's any other questions, now's the time to go.
Are you looking forward to the gala this weekend?
Yes, we are, we have the, the survey family and the days have, are putting on a gala this weekend. They come up with ten thousand dollars cash for the awards and jaws of life, and they called me this week and said they have another eighteen hundred dollars that they want us to go and spend in, for equipment that we need for the new jaws of life. And today I went shopping, and I spent fourteen hundred of their hard-earned dollars, so I've got four hundred left. No, the gala this weekend, we're gonna have all our, our equipment at the gala, we'll have a fire truck there outside, idea of the mayor again, and so people will see the pain, we're supporting their family as they are supporting the Chapo Fire Department, so.
Any areas of support you're looking for, Graham, this month, the old-fashioned Christmas?
Old-fashioned Christmas is on the twenty first of this month, along with the parade, that's on the agenda here, so we did. No, that's, everything's been going really good, morale, like I said, the fire hall has really improved. I'm not getting all the bad eyes and bad looks I was getting before, and everybody's getting on board, it's really, really good movement ahead for it. So I've enjoyed the, this idea of me coming and working for ten hours a week. Yeah, right, you know? It's, yeah, no, well over ten hours a week. It's uh, yeah, no, well over ten hours a week.
And we appreciate you volunteering. You're doing a great job.
Is there anything else, Mark? Uh, thank you.
No.
That's great.
Again, like I told you, I won't be at the gala. I have a mayor's retreat.
And I'm waiting for that letter that is supposed to be read.
Upstairs, it's already on my desk and I have two edits to it and then it'll be sent to you.
Sooner the better.
Yes, sir.
All right.
All right, thank you very much. The fire chief report dated November third, both in paper and verbal. Could I please get a mover? By Paul, seconded by Alex. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Carry. Okay, fire department purchased a Starlink, verbal, was within.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just to follow up on what uh, what Graham's already told us, but the equipment did arrive yesterday. It is incredibly simple apparently to install. And uh, so there's no reason why it can't be up and running.
It started, yeah. They say you just throw in the dash of the vehicle into the work, but we will have it installed properly.
Yeah.
Along with the other equipment. And the uh, I didn't mention the pagers. We have pagers for all the firemen also at this end.
Perfect. Okay, seven point six, municipal enforcement vehicle report. That council township does hereby approve the purchase of a new enforcement vehicle to be tendered in order for delivery of early twenty twenty-six. And that council approved increasing reserve fund by six thousand dollars per year to build a replacement reserve fund for enforcement building property standards. Department starting in twenty twenty-six. Could I please get a mover? Lisi. Oh, moved by Lisi, seconded by. All right, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Carry. Okay, seven point seven, reporting outcome sweeper attachment tender. That township Chapel does hereby approve, question mark? Could I please get?
I'll move.
Mover for discussion? Can I get a second or?
One second.
Kathy. All right. This is gonna be so nice to get a sweeper and then no one will be phoning this break for where is it?
Is it pretty simple to attach the loader and take off?
Yeah, yeah. A lot of municipalities are moving to that and then you don't have another piece of equipment. You just go to loader and then the idea is that we have the crate attachment on it, so it'll fit on every single loader that we have. So if the loader's broken, the attachment can still go. You're not tied to something that's broken, right? So it gives us a lot more versatility. All right, Judy?
All righty, so um, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we were given two options of two different pieces of equipment. Um, both are unique in their design. It's not apples to apples. But uh, Rajon included a couple of members of the public works department. They sat down, they reviewed the videos of both of the pieces of equipment, seeing them in use. And all three of them decided on the Eddie Net Sweeper Attachment. Um, which happens to be the cheaper of the two, so I was thrilled. And um, so that's the uh, the unit that they're recommending to council.
All right, any discussion on the Eddie unit or going with that? I'm gonna go on the other one. Everybody's good with the recommendation? All right, all in favor? Carry. All right. Seven point eight, lifetime dog tags. That township Chapel does hereby approve change lifetime dog tags municipality starting in January twenty twenty-six and that council has approved the cost for the twenty twenty-six dog tags to be thirty dollars per tag. Could I please have a mover? Moved by Lisi, seconded by Alex. Open for discussion?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, great.
So for benefit of everyone here, you wanna tell us a quick?
So, one of, through you, Mr. Mayor, one of the struggles we've had is trying, we have a lot of dogs in our community, but we do not sell very many dog tags. So, um, one of the ideas um, that came up is we don't necessarily need to um, get the dog tag every year. So, I did some calculating and if we buy, um, we sell lifetime dog tags starting this year. You buy one dog tag, it stays on your dog for its many years of, of existence. Because the key here is that we wanna know what dog this house belongs to, or what house this dog belongs to. And so that's really all we care about. It gets your dog back to you almost immediately because we have a list. And we don't have to worry about putting your dog in the kennel and that's scary and dark and you know, this way the dog will be right back home where it belongs. Um, so there's other communities that have tried this and it seems to be successful. So I think let's focus more on getting, the service of getting these dogs taken back to their homes as opposed to making money on annual dog tags.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? Oh, go ahead, Alex.
Only thing I wonder is, I mean, we're gonna get, hopefully people comply. It should be nice if we get them all the owners. Can we make it twenty bucks? Definitely, a little bit less. I mean, you get more in the end if everyone agrees.
Through, through you, Mr. Mayor. I did do a bit of a survey of communities that were doing lifetime tags. And they're much higher than what we're offering. Thirty dollars is quite low compared to hundred and fifty dollars that some communities are asking for. My last community, I think, was asking for fifty dollars. Um, so it's really, um, we just want people to buy them so we know where to take their dogs home to. Thirty.
Okay, any further discussion on the price?
Twenty-five dollars a year, like twenty years ago, so thirty to me is better than a year.
Paul?
That's fine.
Okay, hearing no other discussions or any other points that we wanna talk about before I call it? Hearing none? All in favor? Carry. All right, congratulations, puppies. Seven point nine, bear bin location report. That township Chapel does hereby issue the report for the bear room locations for information. Could I please get a mover?
I'll move.
Moved by Paul, seconded by.
I'll second.
Lisi, open for discussion?
So I ask that this will be put on, so it's great that, I hope people have the most additional bins uh, been put out because of the overflow over the weekend, but I do wanna flag that we continue to monitor that because even with the two bins, there was a chair put in it.
No.
So, the, the misuse of our bear bins is continuing. So originally, we, there was a proposal when we put all the cameras around the municipality, they'd be centrally located and monitored. Uh, we haven't done that for, for, uh, just based on the advice of our, our director. But I do think we need to continue monitoring that because two weeks ago, um, Stephanie's in a stand. Everyone just probably was on the lawn and she was ripping with garbage because it was windy. And that's not acceptable as a tactic there, uh, to have, so.
But I think in Brad's report, he said, he said he was gonna do some public awareness campaigns and information, which is, I think, needed.
I think now that, I think a big difference in the community too though is going to be we're finally gonna have power at the cameras that have been installed now for over a year.
Yeah.
So they'll come online. I think a lot of those things are
Yeah, I agree.
gonna get tempered because the police will be actively using them. And I mean, it's only gonna be a, a few charges. Everybody's gonna wise up. And I think then we could have the opportunity, if we do wanna put one and we have a problematic bear bin, we'll have that ability to pop in another camera.
For sure.
Yeah, and then that problem will start to go away.
Are the two at the arena on camera now?
Yes. All right, any further discussion on bear bins? Hearing none? All in favor? Carry.
I didn't catch the mover in second there. Oh, you, you moved, okay.
And I think it was Kathy.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right, so done the bear bins. Donation, CRE DC, that township Chapel does hereby approve the transfer of fifty thousand and pony funds to Chapel Regional Feminine Corporation for the balance of donation of the dry grease funds refused and donations were sent to the township account in error. Could I please get a mover?
I'll move.
Moved by Paul, seconded by.
I'll second.
Kathy, open for discussion. So just a point of clarification, this was the amount that was set from the mine. It got sent to the township Chapel instead of to where the letter came from, CRE DC. So again, one of the things I gotta work on. But, this'll fix that. All good? Any other questions? Concerns? Hearing none? All in favor? Carry. Okay, proposed Queen Street Ash, King, Teak and Minto upgrades. Plumbering design services of the township township does hereby approve the proposed Queen Street Ash, King, Teak and Minto Street upgrades, plumbering design service cost from a common amount of two hundred eighty-six thousand, two hundred twenty-seven dollars. And that the council approves the design timeline and design will be completed by the end of March twenty twenty-six. Could I please have a mover?
I'll move.
Moved by Lisi, seconded by Alex. Any discussion?
Just a question around the timeline. So these are for the drawings by the end of March. Does that leave us sufficient time? It says tendering and have the project done by fall.
Yes, yes.
Any other comments? So, just so we're clear, cause this didn't happen for Dufferin, but we've heard it now. Done by March.
Yes.
Ready to go, shovel in the ground, not getting delayed.
Yes, now, through you, Mr. Mayor, we may have to wait until some of the spring thaw goes out of the ground.
Yeah.
Um, because it is a water in situation. Um, but I can assure you.
Nope.
And all the duck ducks will be in a row and ready to dig as soon as we're able.
We said the same thing when we were looking at Dufferin and we were supposed to be ready to go. And we got delayed by six months, which was our building season, which I said in Christmas, need to have this in the spring. They said, no, no, we have time. Need to have this. And they kept on delaying it, so.
We understand. With Dufferin, however, they changed the permit to take water regulation. They actually eliminated it to make building homes faster. And what it did was it slowed down our project for the whole summer because we had to re-drill another bore hole and do a settlement report on that bore hole in order to get compliant. So, it was fairly, very much out of our hands.
Yes, the troubling fact is it took them all summer to realize that. That's all. So I just want March, so they understand what March is to us.
Yes.
And that it's ready to go. And not coming back in March to say, well, there's a few things that happened. And then we're into December of next year.
I understand.
Okay, perfect.
Fire on.
Yeah, for sure. Any other comments? Hearing none? All in favor? Carry. Okay, some which to have old-fashioned Christmas and parade?
I'll move for discussion.
Okay. Second or?
Second.
Okay.
So I ask that this will be also be put on, um, Graham, you've mentioned it already. It's coming up very quickly in November. The reason I put this on is we had some challenges in Hydro One. I don't wanna run into those challenges, but for Kermit, have we done necessary paperwork to ensure the trees and lights and banners and everything's done?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have had communications with vice president of uh, Hydro One who assures me that the tree will be handled and managed by them and then removed after the holiday season. Yes. Thank you. We do have to come up with a tree though. They'll plant it, not plant it, but you know, put it in the hole in the ground. So we do need to come up with a tree. Anybody's got the base button?
Yeah, we'll get it here.
Okay.
Let me, let me just add that to my list of stuff. Okay, anything else? All right. Seven point one three, capital planning discussion, twenty twenty-six capital ventures, verbal. That the council township does hereby approve adding following capital items as discussed and agreed by council in the twenty twenty-six budget. Can I have a mover to open discussion?
I'll move.
Lisi?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, moved by Lisi, seconded by Paul. Open for discussion?
So this one here was actually a duplication. Uh, I was talking specifically with the rolling improvements that we just talked about. The design project we called.
Oh, I, so sorry. I thought this was an opportunity for the council to talk about the big capital items that we might wanna look at for the next year.
Sorry, I was.
But if we wanna add something in this, we could put that we're ready to go by March twenty twenty-six.
You see what I have to do?
So that's all I have.
All right, so we're good with that one?
So we can just.
Okay, please.
Sorry for the misunderstanding.
Seven point one for tax process and next steps update. That township Chapel does hereby receive the overview prepared by Les Jones, the treasurer for information. And upon uh, copulation and information Weaver Simmons directs staff per information for session and review unsold properties and make determination about how best to move forward. Could I please have a mover?
I'll move.
By Kathy, seconded by.
I'll second.
Lisi, open for discussion? So has everybody had a chance to read Les's letter? Okay, so, who wants to go first? Yeah, go ahead, Judy.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we are awaiting that very crucial information from Weaver Simmons. They're looking into our ability to be able to go in and view the homes. Sorry, to go in and be able to view the homes before we make the decision on are we gonna invest them, are we gonna try to resell them? Are we going to try something different? So, I, I feel a lot safer if we can see the condition of the homes to be able to make those decisions, so. I'm glad that we're looking, trying to get this additional information. We're supposed to have it tomorrow, by the way.
So I think this would be good for, to be added to the next, move this to the next council meeting. That way there, we stay on top of it.
Yeah.
And then we make sure that we're following it every council meeting and then as stuff comes up, we can act on it. And it's a standing item that stays with us.
Agreed.
How's that sound?
It's good.
Perfect. So you wrote that in there?
I'm putting it in right now, yes.
Perfect. Any other further discussion? Thoughts, anything? Hearing none? All in favor? Carry. Okay, twenty twenty-six regular uh, council meetings, office hours and closing. The council does hereby approve the schedule of their council meetings for twenty twenty-six and for the council does approve the office hours and closing of the twenty twenty-five holiday season. Could I please have a mover?
I'll move.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Kathy. Open for discussion? Hearing no discussion? Anything to add, Judy?
No, standard dates that we choose.
Hearing nothing? All in favor? Carry. Okay, council payable. That township Chapel does hereby receive information, council payable in the amount of hundred twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and three cents for the period ending on October twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five. Could I please have a mover?
I'll move.
Wait, who's going?
I'm sorry, that's mine.
You can be allowed to state here.
It's not fire scene.
We get a mover? Alex, moved by Alex.
This is our fire department, that one.
Seconded by.
I'll second.
Lisi, open for discussion? Questions? Hearing none? All in favor? Carry. Okay, resume. Bylaw twenty twenty-five fifty-six being the bylaw entering agreement with the problems of Ontario Fire Protection Services reimbursement unincorporated Ontario twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six and the bylaw twenty-five twenty twenty-five fifty-six being the bylaw to enter into agreement with the problems of Ontario with the fire protection reimbursement and unincorporated Ontario twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six be read a first and a second timeline on this day third of November twenty twenty-five and further be read a third time passed and properly signed sealed this third day of November twenty twenty-five. Wow. Any mover?
I'll move.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Alex. Any discussion on the tongue twister? Hearing none? All in favor? Carry. Correspondence? Correspondents. And there's a list of them. So we're gonna go A to K, that Township Chapel received correspondence on the November third, twenty twenty-five council agenda with fallen extracted for discussion. Is there any to be extracted? Hearing none, can I get a mover?
Oh.
Moved by Paul, seconded by.
I'll second.
Kathy. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Carry. In camera. Adjourn to an in camera session, that Township Chapel moved to an in camera session on November third at six twenty P M for the following members in camera session, meetings for regular council meetings. Uh, sorry, seven.
Seven twenty.
Seven twenty. Sorry. Uh, twenty, at twenty twenty-five. Persons, matters, or individual, including municipal and or local boards pursuant to Ontario Municipal Act, section two, three, nine, two, E, human resources, three items. This is right here.
Uh. We just need to have a mover, second, there, going to camera?
So, so I also.
That's included too, yes, sorry.
Advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for the purpose pursuant to Ontario Municipal Act, section two, three, nine, two, F. Legal advice, two items, can I please have a mover?
I'll move.
Moved by Lisi, seconded by.
I'll second.
We have questions.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Carry.
She has a question.
There are no questions, sorry.
But we all know what you're talking about, so you said.
In the in camera?
No, on Ontario, about some of sweeper attachment? So you gave a whole bunch of things, but we don't know what you're talking about, we're here, listening, we don't know.
On which part, on the sweeper?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a sweeper attachment?
Yeah.
The township one needs a new sweeper.
It needs a new sweeper.
Yes.
That's why it wasn't.
So it's been broken?
Yeah.
So this rings off every day cuz everybody wants their street swept and there's sand going through the whole community. Is that not true?
It is very true.
So every time you see certain individuals, they remind you about it, so now we have as a top priority to do a replacement and we didn't buy a normal conventional sweeper. We saw, actually saw one down at a conference and then I was driving through a roundabout in, um, where the mountains blew out, Midling. And in the roundabout, there was a loader with a sweeper on it, sweeping. And then, uh, so I stopped, I pulled over and I, we watched it. And then it, uh, filled up and then it went up to a dump truck, lifted above it, dumped sand inside the dump truck, went back to sweeping. And then cleaned out different areas and then there was a little parking lot, it went into the parking lot. Cleaned it all up. And then we, uh, started researching it because it's cheaper to buy a sweeper under them.
Yeah, we thought it'd be like a hundred and fifty, but now it's sixty. But when we used to buy the full sweeper.
It's about three hundred thousand.
It's about three hundred thousand.
But remember though, you're only buying like the hydraulic attachment. So like, you know, the snow blower that puts the snow in the back of the dump truck for the municipality? Has a motor and everything, it's self-contained, but it goes on in front of the loader, so you, you already own the carriage equipment. So we call that carriage equipment, when it grabs the attachment, that's your carriage, that carries it.
Okay.
So you're carrier, so that's the loader. And we have three loaders in the municipality that are all wired the same, so now they'll, don't have an excuse for the loader to be broken. Because you can still pick up the attachment. The attachment doesn't have a motor, it doesn't have any of the things that move, it's just basic brooms and hydraulics, hoses, things that are easy to fix. So we shouldn't be having no sweeper in the spring.
The other one is, uh, it's very general, design services.
Of the service.
So.
For the Queen Street, for the streets are being designed to be fixed.
Okay, so that's, um, so you, you hire a contractor and you give them a whole bunch of drawings? So they send a, a big roll of, uh, drawings, so you roll them all on on your table. Well, that's for that person to make all those drawings, so they come, they do bore holes in the ground, they look at the different services, they see what the services needs are. Let's say there's, uh, uh, additional lots or whatever, the rates, they tell you the size of the pipe, they tell you your grades, they tell you where your manholes are located, tell you what elevations to use. Uh, where your curves are gonna go, where your storm drains, uh, where your manhole covers are, where your inspections, your clean outs. Uh, where he does all the water, your hydrants, uh, where you swab from, so they're designing all that ahead. And there's certain angles that the pipe has to go to get your swabs through, or else you have a really difficult time. So that's all in your pre-engineering. So then you do all your pre-engineering, then you change all your valve systems, so it's isolating it, so how you pass the swabs through, it's all engineered. And then you have your different heights, where you need frost protection, where you're gonna need blasting, and this company tells you all that for almost three hundred thousand dollars. And they better have it done by March, right?
Yeah, but it's a good idea because a lot of streets have no laps.
Well, it's a, so, so just before we go that far is that it's a requirement for a grant, you have to have your design build drawings or you can't apply to the. So we had pre-construction, now we know that we're gonna do it and we've committed to the community of going out and fixing these streets, we have to. Cuz we're, we're burning about, was it twenty-three thousand a month in water?
Yes, right now, just to keep the system flowing safely.
So you'll see in the different parts of the community, there's these bleeder, bleeders. So there's, uh, two of them on Queen Street, there's another one down on, uh, King. And, uh, oh, Fire Chief, you need presents required at the door. So what, what those are is you have to bleed them and why you have to bleed them is cuz we're trying to keep the chlorination content. And the reason why we're having trouble with chlorination is you have a pipe that's this big. And when they break and you get down there, they're actually only this big because over time, we use steel pipe back in the day. And you have to remember that this is installed in like nineteen eleven or nineteen twelve.
Ten.
Nineteen ten, nineteen ten to nineteen twelve. So these pipes are that old and back in the day, we didn't properly backfill because we didn't know, we thought we put a piece of steel in the ground and it lasts, right? Well, steel doesn't, it, it, uh, rots and stuff and a hundred years later, rocks that we backfilled with end up cuz we have, uh, frost that goes up and down and then it snaps a pipe, you get a fracture in it and then we pay contractors to go and fix it. Contractors don't like going out in forty below, it's not a lot of fun. And, uh, you fix these, so we're trying to get away from that, so we don't spend a couple hundred thousand dollars a year fixing them, you actually have good service. And then you'll notice, uh, we have low water pressure on, uh, King Street, we have low water pressure on Queen, we have low water pressure uh, at the corner of, uh, Teak and, uh, Queen two. And just, it's old pipe, it has to be replaced. So there's a big, big push now, it's seven point nine million that we're looking for from the government. We were in, uh, Ottawa talking about it, we were in Toronto talking about it, we were in Sudbury talking about it, we were in North Bay talking about it. We were at an event in Timmins talking about it, getting more ministers, we've gone to four or five events in Sudbury. You know, getting hold of ministers and explaining how important it is that we get that money because we just can't afford seven, you, you guys see the budget now, you've been coming to a couple of meetings, we don't have that kind of money. So one percent of your tax is thirty-one thousand dollars, we talked about that at the last meeting. So we'd have to up your taxes like three, four hundred percent to get to seven point nine million, right? Which is not something that we can do. So we have to really, really lobby the government to get those things, so that's what we're up to.
Okay, I just wanted to explain, so would it happen beneficial to the council in America if the people in Chapel kind of supported you more this way? And how can we, if we do, do it, and I'm trying to make any sense.
Make sure you have coffee with people tomorrow and tell them about what you heard and what you learned. You know, because half, half of the phone calls that, that comes that peo- people don't know and they don't take the time to read all the, all the minutes and stuff.
That's why we're asking questions.
Yeah. All right, okay, we'll do, that's learn something, so we'll do a better job of explaining what we're looking at to in the next coming weeks.
I'll try to make it longer.
Thank you very much for the attendance, it was great to see everybody.
Thank you for watching. Don't forget to like and subscribe. If you have a video, story, or event you would like to see featured on this channel, just send us an email at nlcaudits@gmail.com.